Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Pitt County Planning Board Meeting, to the ones in the audience and to who's watching this on cable. We could have the roll call, please.
Fay Barefoot.
Here.
Brad Guth.
Here.
RJ Hamby.
Here.
Anthony Heron.
Here.
Ricky Hines.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Here.
Maria Rogerson.
Here.
Kenneth Ross.
Here.
Mr. Chairman Danny Smith, Matt Nobles and Clayton Malloy Jr. will not be present tonight.
Okay, thank you, Tab. We will have the prayer by Mr. Hamby and I will lead us in the pledge.
Will you stand? At this time, I would just like to come humbly to submit, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity again just to say thank you. And as we do this meeting tonight, give us a sense of you and as we do this, do the right bidding for the people. These and all others, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Return, please.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby, for the prayer. Some items here. Everyone received their minutes from the November the fifteenth meeting. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes. Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes for November the fifteenth. Could I get a vote by just... All saying aye.
Aye.
And likewise, motion carry. Next up, we have Mr. Eric with a zoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one rezoning request for you tonight. It is by DPD Properties Two LLC. It's a conditional district rezoning. The request is to rezone just a little under three acres on the eastern side of Beres Construction Road. It's just south of its intersection with NC thirty-three. Parcel number zero-three-one-one-three. Request is to go from rural residential to general industrial conditional district. And that's to allow, as per the applicant, a debris washout area for an existing concrete plant that's on the property. Just to give a little background, a portion of the property was rezoned back in two thousand and seven to a conditional use district, which is what we used to have before we had conditional zoning. That was to allow the concrete plant out there. We, as Mark's gonna describe it a little bit later in this meeting, we do go out and do annual inventories of all our zoning approvals. And the most recent inspection this year determined that that washout area had expanded to the area that's being proposed for rezoning. So approval of the request would bring it into compliance with the zoning ordinance. This is a aerial view of the property. You see it's on Beres Construction Road. It's directly across from a couple manufacturing home parks. You see the concrete plant is just to the southwest of it and you see it's just south of the intersection with NC thirty-three. This is a view of the property. You see the existing piles of concrete debris from the plant. This is a view of the existing plant that's out there. It's DPD Concrete. This is to the south, as if you're heading back towards Old River Road, then towards the north, if you're heading back towards Greenville. This is just some of the adjacent mobile homes to the property. Land use plan calls for it to be suburban residential with the back portion, which is predominantly in a pond from a former sand mine. But suburban residential is intended to include residential land uses, including single-family and manufactured home subdivisions, manufactured home parks, limited multifamily, commercial office, light industrial and public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. And that criteria includes frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses and spatial separation from non-compatible uses. That land designated as suburban residential is distinguished by the greater potential for development. So you see the existing land use is primarily industrial already because of the former sand mine that's located in the back. As well as to the south, you have Barn Hill Contracting, which is a heavy equipment construction contractor. Then the manufactured home parks across the street. The zoning, as you see, adjacent to it is already general industrial and that was a conditional use district rezoning. So that general industrial is for the concrete plant itself, whereas this new area would be for that washout area. GI District's intended to accommodate a wide range of manufacturing, warehousing, wholesale and related commercial and service uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and utilities to support that type of development. And also, again, a conditional zoning district does allow for the approval of a proposal for a specific use with reasonable conditions. To ensure it's compatible with the surrounding neighboring properties. And again, the use is a debris washout area for an existing concrete plant. This is the plan that was provided by the applicant. It shows the area. You can see how that area has expanded into the area that was not originally zoned general industrial. Staff finds the request is consistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan, given the property's proximity to existing industrial land uses. Again, with the existing concrete plant, but there's also several sand mines and other industrial type uses around it. And also, it's adjacent to existing GI zone property. I just find the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it is an extension to that existing concrete plant. And again, approval of this request would bring it into compliance with the zoning ordinance. So staff does recommend approval of the request. It also recommends the following additional conditions. First is to provide a revised site plan showing a fifty-foot repairium buffer along... There's a stream feature present on the site. Or to provide proper documentation from either Division of Water Quality or have our department go out and make a stream call exempting it from the noose buffer regulations. And just to kind of show you where it's at, this is the map of the plant itself. You see there's a ditch that runs along that side of the property line and that is what is considered the stream feature. Another condition is to provide a vegetative buffer yard in accordance with the Section ten H of the Pitt County zoning ordinance. That would run along Beres Construction Road and also along the adjoining residentially zoned property. And so just to give you an idea, also, that red line would kind of show you where that vegetation needs to be extended. The conditional use zoning that's on the concrete plant, you see they've already got vegetation that was required when that was approved. And this request, we're asking that that be extended to sort of bound between the adjacent residential properties. We'd like to now entertain any public comments. Planning Board, then make a recommendation to Board of County Commissioners. And they are scheduled to hold a public hearing on January eighth and that should be twenty eighteen, not twenty seventeen, obviously. But January eighth at nine AM. So that is a day meeting. That is the only meeting in January for the Commissioners. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to open up for public comments.
Okay, the public comment section is open. We did have one person to sign up. And before you come up, Mr. Ken Malpus, we have a three-minute speaking time. So just keep that in mind. Thank you. State your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. My name is Ken Malpus. I'm representing DPD Concrete. What you have before you is, like we said, we want to expand the area. This site was originally ten acres and it was owned by ER Lewis Construction Company. While DPD Concrete was... Barn Hill was in the process of getting out of the concrete business and DPD Concrete bought it. Well, when ER Lewis had it, we did the plans and everything for the original ten acres. Well, he kept digging and digging. So that back line you see dug up about half of what was originally on the ten acres. So what you actually have now is eight acres of usable land, which originally was ten, but about half of it was dug up. So we're not making the project any bigger. It's just getting rotated a little bit. And what you saw in the back line of the pond was part of the usable. It just got dug up before it was actually purchased and the plant was moved over there. So the end result is it's actually still smaller than what was approved back in two thousand and seven. I'd be glad to answer. And we're okay with all the conditions with the vegetation and what Eric was bringing up.
Vegetation and all that.
We're fine with all that. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is it... There's no one else that wants to speak? Okay, all right. Consider the public hearing closed. Eric? Anybody have any questions for Eric?
Any feedback from property owners?
No, sir. We haven't received any feedback from any.
I talked to a couple personally and definitely a couple of them that you sent letters to. They were fine with it.
Mrs. Fay?
He answered the question I was gonna ask about the property owners. Had you heard anything from them?
No, we have not received any calls or comments from anybody.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, we approve. Second.
All right, I have a motion. Mr. Kenneth Ross and second by Clayton Malloy. Call for the vote. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise? All right, thank you, Eric. Thank you, Ken. All right, Eric, you still have Southwest Bypass land use?
Yes, sir. Just to give a quick update, our monthly status update on the Southwest Bypass Corridor land use plan. We're still working along with Stewart to begin drafting this document. Some of the completed tasks, back last month on November twentieth, we did do a tour of the corridor area with our partners, particularly our municipal partners, also with the NPO and folks from Stewart, just to give them a better... Our consultants have a better feel for the corridor area, kind of understand some of the development constraints, some of the lay of the land, essentially. Then the following day in the Winterville Depot, we did hold stakeholder interviews and Ms. Fay was able to join us for that. And that was a very productive meeting. We had like six sessions throughout the day, about forty-five minutes each, where we had different groups come in from developers and engineers to the school folks, or folks from Pitt County Schools. Pitt Community College came in. Town officials were able to come in, elected officials, planning board members. So we got a lot of good input and our folks at Stewart, they've been compiling information, sort of developing some themes of what they've heard in some of those comments. So hopefully we'll be able to take that information and roll it into some good policies and ideas in the plan. Some of our next steps is to hold our first joint steering committee meeting. And Ms. Fay and Mr. Hines, since y'all have been appointed that board, that will be held January twenty-third. It's gonna be at six o'clock PM and you'll be getting... We'll follow up with a notice on that as well to formally invite you to that meeting. But that'll be in Winterville. Right now, at the Town Hall Assembly Room is where they're looking to hold that. And so y'all, plus our other appointed members, will be having... It'll be a joint meeting with our technical group, which is gonna involve the staff. The folks from Stewart will be there and just start kind of kicking off those meetings. Hopefully have... We're gonna be continuing to have our technical group meetings once a month. And then with the joint meetings between the study oversight group that y'all are a part of, have those about every other month, give or take. So again, that first one will be January twenty-third. Then we're also gonna be looking to finalize our corridor study area. We've got a good start on it. Some working on trying to define where those boundaries of that study area are and we'll be bringing that back to you hopefully pretty soon. Then also to continue our inventory and existing conditions analysis. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer any questions if anybody has about the plan.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, all right. Thank you, Eric.
Appreciate it.
All right, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'd like to give you a brief update on some of our zoning administration enforcement activities. Every year, we do a annual zoning inventory inspection of plans and permits that have been issued by either this board and/or the Board of Commissioners. So these are plans and permits that were approved dating back to when we first established countywide zoning in two thousand and three, two thousand and four. So we investigated ninety-four properties this year. We did find twelve properties in violation. And to date, six of those have been resolved. And we have another five. They're currently in different states of being brought into compliance. And one of them was that concrete rezoning that you just heard from Eric. And we do have one outstanding violation currently that we have not, you know, had any contact with the violating party. Some of the violations that we found have been encroachments into sand mine buffers that are required. Some parking spaces that have been required on approved plans have not been paved. There's been some development that's not in accordance with the approved site plan. And in certain cases, there's landscaping that wasn't installed according to the approved plan. So those are the types of things we see. These are separate from the zoning complaints we get. They're usually from, you know, adjacent property owners, neighbors that are calling to complain. So this is a separate annual inventory inspections that we do. Do you have any questions on this?
But you said, how often do y'all get out to do these?
We do a complete review once a year.
Once a year. But anytime someone would call, y'all would go out?
Yeah, that's year-round, you know.
But y'all don't have no, like, maybe every... Sometimes six months or three months, you might check to see if everything is still... I'm just asking.
Sometimes we do. You know, when you're going out to another site, you might, you know, check on, you know, other things that you drive by. It's mostly complaint-based.
Most complaint-based. How often do we get the complaints?
This past year, I think we had almost twenty cases.
Okay.
Usually junk cars or someone running a commercial business out of a house or things like that.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Earlier in the year, staff conducted site visits to every subdivision street in the county's planning jurisdiction that had not been adopted for maintenance by the Department of Transportation. So tonight, I'll present our findings on the conditions of those subdivision streets. We've also generated a report and that can be found on pages thirty-two and thirty-three. It goes into a little more detail than I'll go into tonight. All right, so let me give you a little background. This process was first done in two thousand and twelve. And since it's been five years, we felt it was appropriate to, again, document the conditions of these streets. They were rated either new, good, fair, poor, or adopted if the Department of Transportation had adopted them for maintenance. So pictures were taken of each street to document its condition. So under the subdivision ordinance, the developer is responsible to maintain streets until the Department of Transportation adopts them. The developer must petition DOT to adopt the streets. DOT will not adopt them if they do not meet certain standards. And these standards range from anywhere from the condition of the street to housing density on the street. So until such time that DOT adopts the streets, the developer is responsible for maintaining them. So we took pictures. Let me go through a few of them and show you what we consider new, good, fair, or poor. On the left here is new condition. The right is good. These are both fair condition. You see they're a little more deteriorated from the first slide, but still in pretty good condition. And then this is poor. As you see, there's pretty large potholes on these streets. So let me start by going over some of the two thousand and twelve data, just to give you a reference. So two thousand and twelve, we inspected thirty-four point six miles of unadopted subdivision streets. About two point nine miles were in poor condition, twelve point five were in fair, and nineteen point two were in new or good condition. Let's compare that to the two thousand and seventeen data. This year, we inspected about thirty-eight point eight total miles. So we added about four miles of unadopted subdivision streets. So the bad news is that there were more classified in poor condition than in two thousand and twelve, more mileage. But good news is that over six miles of subdivision streets had been adopted by DOT since two thousand and twelve. That's good because that's the ultimate goal for all these streets, to have DOT adopt and maintain them. Give you a few takeaways. Again, more streets were categorized as poor condition than in two thousand and twelve. And as to be inspected, newer streets and those with curb and gutter seem to be in overall better condition. This is encouraging to find that about sixteen percent of the streets that had been inspected in two thousand and twelve had been adopted since that time. And due to several amendments to the subdivision ordinance over the past few years, we feel as staff that we can enforce maintenance standards for unadopted streets a little better to help prevent them from going from new or good down to fair or poor condition. So similar to zoning, we take citizen complaints and investigate those. And we also have annual inspection reports that developers are required to submit to the department. So there's a little more detail on the report on pages thirty-two and thirty-three, but if you have any questions right now, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for Chris? Anybody? Thank you for the report, Chris.
Thank you.
I just... Sorry, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
So I know you were going out there and doing visual inspections, but what was your criteria, I guess your threshold, between poor and fair? Like, did the road have to be fifty percent full of potholes? Is there a certain percentage or is there just one pothole over a half a mile length?
So, well, let me first say, it was fairly subjective and there were several different staff members involved. But the difference between fair and poor to me was that if we look on the screen here, the poor, it was very obvious. It was very difficult to drive over. These potholes were very large. Fair was more of, you could just tell the subdivision was aged, hadn't been necessarily maintained as well as it could have been, but still drivable condition.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. James Rose?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate you guys coming out tonight. And just a lot of informational items and the first ones that are not ones that you have already been made aware of because you've dealt with them over the last couple of months. So Eastern Recreation Properties, A.R.A.P. Two, conditional district. I will stop for a second and let you know, staff recommendation and your recommendation was not upheld by the Commissioners. They did go ahead and approve that one with some additional conditions that night. So just know that one didn't move forward. Your subdivision and zoning ordinance amendments that you dealt with last month were approved earlier this week, as well as the two rezoning requests, one for Angela LaBrares and also Gary Jackson. Both were approved at Monday night's Commissioners' meeting. Also, just to bring you up to date, Eric's mentioned already Southwest Bypass. With that road being constructed, there are several service roads, there are some realignments. And one that's already come to fruition is what used to be Davenport Farm Road. And so this necessitated a road name change or actually naming a segment of road that had been cut off from what has been realigned as Davenport Farm Road. So if you've been in this area lately, Southwest Bypass, just again, just west of where we are tonight, coming in from Wilson on two sixty-four, you can then, hopefully within the next couple of years, be able to take a right at the interchange and move forward south toward Aiden without hitting a stoplight or anything. So that's about thirteen miles worth of roadway before you tie back in south of Aiden. The area we're dealing with is right up at the... Close to the intersection of the Southwest Bypass and Davenport Farm Road and US thirteen. And Davenport Farm Road used to connect right here. Now, if you've been through there lately, it actually is a new alignment shown in blue. And this area here is actually a stub street of sorts. So a new road name needed to be created for that. We'll also handle that through E-nine-one-one addressing so folks can respond to any emergencies out there. It was named Crawford... Let me get this right. Crawford Smith Farm Road. There's a lot of debate about which arrangement of the road names were gonna come first. Crawford Smith Farm Road is the new segment. We hope we can fit all that on the sign blade. So... But if you haven't been out there, this is the new alignment. The bridge structure here is actually going over the proposed Southwest Bypass. That's where Davenport Farm Road used to come in. And you can see the embankment there where the new road is being constructed. And this was the bridge I was just mentioning. So when you come around to US thirteen now, you actually come into a stoplight that's been installed recently. This is US thirteen. These cars are actually lined up coming on Bell Arthur Road. So the new Davenport Farm Road alignment and Bell Arthur Road now come in together at US thirteen. So... And that is the new intersection of Crawford Smith Farm Road and Davenport Farm Road. So that's the whole story about that one. Also, as Chris was up talking about our roads and some of the conditions in subdivisions, I will tell you, we're moving forward and have almost completed the process for improving the roads in Woodmore subdivision. At Monday night's meeting, the Commissioners did approve the preliminary assessment role. All the road... All the work's been done out there and we've set a public hearing date for January eighth to actually confirm the assessment role. So, Mrs. Rogerson, this is what we considered very, very poor when we were out there. And this is not... Actually, this has been improved a little bit when we took these pictures from what it had been. There had been some base course material put into the potholes, but this is Woodmore Drive and that's what we started with. And you can see the yellow DOT truck. They were a big partner in this whole process, ensuring we met all the punch list item. So we did have a contractor involved and this is kind of the start of it in the spring of this year. Had to do some drainage improvements. It just wasn't the road bed itself, but actually the roadside ditches. Lot of new base course material brought in. And ultimately, that's what we ended up with. Had to install a couple of new driveways. They were not installed properly to begin with. And also, a new blacktop all the way around. So that's what we have now. And that was approved by the State Board of Transportation and is now part of the state road maintenance system. So that was the ultimate goal that Chris mentioned. This has happened. In this case, the county put the money up to have these streets improved. And the benefited property owners, twenty-one property owners in this case, will now repay money over the next ten years to pay that money back. So that is a process we put in place when we first started this inventory back in two thousand and twelve. We set up a process by which folks could come in and petition the Commissioners, all based on state statutes. Certain percentage have to be involved. And this is our first, I'll say, pilot project. It turned out to be a good one. And we have another group that's waiting in queue now if we have funding to serve them. Any questions about this project? Okay, and also flood recovery efforts are still going on. We've got a buyout program with twelve properties that we're still awaiting funding through FEMA. However, we are receiving funding from various sources for rehabilitation of homes that were damaged by floods, the flood last year. So just this past week, we did get the final approval of the Disaster Recovery Act funding, which is a million dollars that will help with not only site-built homes, but manufactured home rehab and also can help with a number of other activities associated with flood recovery. So we're proud to have that in place. Your monthly report is also included in your package along with some other articles that Tab's collected throughout the month. And with that, Mr. Chairman, welcome any questions or comments. And, um, with that, Mr. Chairman, welcome any questions or comments you have.
Anybody have any questions from Mr. Rose? Uh, James?
Do want to, again, uh, express staff's appreciation for all your support and assistance throughout the year. And tonight, we are fortunate enough to have our county attorney with us. Uh, she's joining us tonight, Janice Gallagher. So we appreciate the assistance that she's, uh, a lot of assistance that you may not see before it gets to you, uh, to make sure it meets everything in your ordinance and as far as the state statutes. So, uh, welcome any questions or comments.
Comments? Well, appreciate you, James. We just, thank you and your staff for all you do. Uh, again, we, as a board, you always got us informed and on task of what we need to see and what we need to do. And we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you, uh, attorney, county attorney, for all your assistance. Anybody have any questions? If not, meeting adjourned.